Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight, Thursday, March 4th, 2021. Our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. We call the meeting to order and ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation, under God. With justice for all. Thank you. I've got to learn to rotate my camera up. All people see is my gut. Sorry about that. Our next would be additions and changes to the agenda. I'm going to request. Because of the fact that we really need to go into executive session. I'm going to request that if we cannot get through the agenda by nine. That we close the meeting to go into executive session. Does anybody want to voice comments on that? Or is that acceptable? Leaving it up to the body.
Dan, I think it's acceptable. I think it's a good idea. I would just think that we need to take a few of the items that are pressing and move them up on the agenda. We've got Sharon here because of some van. Cement C AAA grants and Nick Wallach is here because of the. Fire marshal vehicle. So I think we should, we move them up just in case we run out of time.
Okay, so that would be A, B, and E, I believe.
If I could step in, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, please, Andy.
Yeah. Selectman Richmond's right about moving up if we have to. The fire marshal's vehicle, but I believe Nick's here for the selection of chief officers. So that would be also addition D.
Okay, A, B, C, and E then?
D, D isn't dog.
New business D is.
I'm sorry, E.
Okay.
You're right, A, B, C, and E.
Okay.
Does anyone have any concerns or comments about doing that?
I mean.
Peter, I think it's a good idea. I like it. Plus it's also respectful of our guests. And it allows us to, to address the executive session in a time that makes sense rather than much later in the evening. So I, I think it's a good idea. I like it.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, since we're following the rules these days. If we're changing the agenda, we just have to vote on it.
Correct. So that's what I've got to make that motion. That we move up when it comes into the new business section. That we do. A, B, C, E, and then go back to D, F, G, H. And that we. Close the meeting and go into executive session at nine o'clock if we have not been able to get through all the items. Go ahead, here a second.
Don't need one.
We don't need one, but I would be happy to do it.
Okay, so all those in favor? Gail?
Aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And John?
John Collins, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, thank you. Our next section would be our, yes. Would be our public comment.
Anyone in attendance who would like to make a public comment, please write your name and comment in the chat box. And you will be recognized. And there is another opportunity at the end of the meeting for public comment. There's no comments at this time.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to our good to know. Andy, do we have anything for good to know?
We do not. And if there's any selectmen that want to pick a topic that we, my office will reach out to, please let us know.
I actually have a topic that I talked to you about. I tried to make contact with DEP, but was unsuccessful. So.
I'm willing to, I'm willing to do that. You just let me know that like a day or two ago, but I can follow up on that.
If you could. You know, as I say, with spring coming on, I just think it would be opportune as people do hit the trails and get out into nature.
Why don't you let the rest of the selectmen and the public know what, what we're talking about if you want, Dan?
Sure. What I'd like to do would be to get one of the wildlife biologists to come on and just do maybe a brief discussion of how to interact with basically wildlife. As, as wildlife start rearing their young, there are always instances where people come across wildlife and, and the whys and hows and what to do and what not to do. Things to expect. You know, it would be for the benefit of wildlife as well as for the people. I know back when I was doing the fishing gang constable for the town. I'd had people that were picking up baby owls and bringing them to me. And it's like you. It's the worst thing in the world. You need to leave them there. Their parents will take care of them. You know, people think that they're helping, but they are actually hurting the wildlife. You know, and it crosses all the borders, turtles, amphibians. You know, these things know what they're doing. They've survived. And, you know, I understand that people meaning well will sometimes try to, to help, but. It's not. And so I'd like to get a wildlife, you know, people from the wildlife division to just kind of. Help to explain to people what to do when they encounter wildlife, how to act. I just thought it would be good topics as people are going to be hitting the rails and trails and getting out in the nature more. That was what my thought was. Yes, Peter?
Andy, I know we've had them before, but maybe in the future, I would like to hear, I think the public would benefit from listening to AHM and their Health Matters program that's really starting to do some nice work. We're doing some support of that in the Hebron Open for Business Task Force, highlighting some of our Hebron businesses and some areas on health for the, for the general public. So if I could just get them on maybe a future agenda, I think an invitation to them would, I think the public would benefit from hearing what they're doing currently.
Good. Good. Yes, Mark.
Hey, while we're on the topic of future agendas. Andy, I'd like to bring up the forest management plan and discuss that. If it entails bringing the forester to a meeting to talk about it and the benefits of it and how it would make our open space better. I'd like to do that in the future.
Okay.
Actually, I concur with you, Mark. It, it, the plan would help the wildlife. It would help the biota. There's, there's no downside in, in that plan using our resources wisely. It, it just makes good common sense. But, all right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, John.
If you bring a forester, I hope you bring an ecologist. You know, most of us who are in that background are skeptical of having a forest management plan prepared by a forester, not by an ecologist. We've already seen that, that the outline was for forest extraction, which is not what the, the open space is for. And in fact, could harm beneficial uses. For example, I have a PhD in soil science and we all know that logging destroys soils. And so. In my line of work, and I did it, you know, I did this for 30 years, there's two ways to do this. You're looking to extract wood from the forest, then yeah, you bring in a forester. But if you're looking for a forest inventory. Beneficial use, you're looking at different skill sets. And a lot of the grants that we've gotten specifically say we cannot. Do this for money. So. So yeah, I'm, I'm for a forest inventory, I guess. I think actually that the biota and the biology of our forests are very healthy right now. I think anybody that you bring in is going to tell you that, that the wildlife thriving here. And so I'm, I'm, I also want to know where this idea came from. Again, you know, I have a PhD in soil science. This is for a career. And so I'm concerned.
Okay.
John apparently wasn't there for the presentation because we had that type of comments when we had it, but we'll do it again. This isn't a timber harvest. It never was meant to be a timber harvest. And there's ways to do a forestry management plan that is cognizant of everybody's concerns. It's not just a money grab. This was never meant to be that. You got one person on the open space that continues to pound that into people's heads. That's not what it was. We have no problems bringing ecologists in, no problems leaving any parcels alone and not doing anything. This was an overview of all the properties. What we're trying to say as a manager, and I've been in forestry and my family's been in forestry all our lives. Is you can't just keep buying open space and putting a cable across the entrance and closing it off. The people in town don't like that. We need to open it up and manage the forest. That doesn't mean we got to go and do a timber harvest. A lot of properties are managed where it benefits the habitat. It gets rid of the evasives. There's a lot of things you can do. Everybody envisions a skidder, a logger, and a chainsaw just going in there and plundering. And I don't blame them. I would be afraid of that too, but that's not what this plan was. A lot of the people missed the presentation. We had a couple of them. We're willing to do more, but that's never was the intent.
Well, I read, Mr. Chairman, I read the, the, the overview in the presentation. And again, it's not just one person on open space. On open space, actually, there are scientists, environmental scientists, and I can say that they're united in their concern about this. Second of all, I have also had land that has been in forestry and I've hired, hired foresters. But I've also had forest companies like Warehouse as clients. And like I said, I've done environmental impact statements. So I think my background is a little bit more detailed than yours, Andy.
It is in everything, John. In everything it is. So it's your opinion.
Well, I have a PhD in soil science.
Yeah, public high school degree.
For, for, for years. So let me just, let me just finish this. This, this shows a certain amount of omission of what, what this business is all about. And there's a big difference between bringing in an ecologist in and doing a, a natural resource inventory and bringing a forester in to look at the value of the land. And I'm going to fight this. If this is attitude that the town manager has, I'm going to fight this because.
You fight everything.
Excuse me.
Can you call a meeting to order, please?
Decorum, can I, can you, first of all, Mr. Tierney should not be interrupted. He's not a member of this board. He has no right to, to, to say these things. I want you to enforce decorum, please.
At this point, we will bring in experts. We will carry this on. This was barely discussion for other things to bring before the good to know portion. Let's not have this discussion now. We will bring this later on. We need to move forward.
Well, point of order, Mr. Chairman, I want you to, to enforce decorum, especially Mr. Tierney's interruptions and his attitude towards this and what he has said to me, which was rude. You know, I, I, it is your job to enforce decorum. He's not a member of this board. He should have asked to, to say things, and he didn't, doesn't have the floor, so.
Duly noted. We are moving on.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make a comment too? Related to this, it'll be brief. Selectman Collins, this is not a one-way street. You, you need to be respectful and considerate of others too. So you can't just claim that you want everybody to treat you respectfully and responsibly and not demean you or interrupt you. Because you interrupt people, you demean people, you assassinate their characters and intelligence during meetings. So it's got to go both ways. Thank you. I'm done.
Excuse me.
You don't need to say anything to that, John. You're always dominating the meetings, John. You said enough already, okay?
We are.
You dominate everything. There's four other people on this board. Stop dominating everything.
Okay.
We are moving on, please.
Mr. Chairman, decorum again.
We are moving on.
By Mr. Rivera. I, I don't remember insulting anybody. I'm actually usually very quiet these meetings, so.
Please, we are moving on. Our next is appointments and resignations. We have a letter from Deborah Witt resigning her position from the Douglas Library Board of Trustees. I'll read the motion. We opened it up for discussion. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Deborah Witt from the Douglas Library Board of Trustees with regret and thanks for her years of dedicated service. I don't know, did you want to, yes, please.
I sure do. I've worked with, with Debbie for about 12 years on library matters and she was an invaluable help. She's intelligent, hardworking, and been a pleasure to work with, as all the others will tell you. And I think we really need to thank her for her years of dedicated service. She really loves libraries.
I personally know Debbie. What a great person, both her and Bill, her husband. And anything that Debbie got involved in, she did with all of her heart and soul. It's, it's going to be sad to not have her there. And I don't know what else to say. She will be sorely missed on that board and I'm hoping that she's going to be able to enjoy more time with her grandkids. Because I'm sure that's where it's going. So. Hearing the motion, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Gail? You're on mute.
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next would be the town manager's report.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief. We've been working on the budgets, as you will know. They've been submitted. Some numbers have been changed already since that submission. So we continue to work on that. We'll bring you an update whenever possible. We're working with the fire department and the fire chief. It's on the agenda tonight to look to change the process. And the hiring of the chief has kind of gotten away from the rank and file, so. The application period is closed as of Monday. We got 10 applicants, so we would like to move forward on that. Been working with the chief with that. Of course, we had another storm with a lot of power outages. That took some time out of the week to deal with that. Attended the last Board of Finance meeting, working on some interdepartment stuff. They seem to be in good shape. And working with the new resident trooper on the upgrades to the department, which are quite a few. Mark, maybe you want to talk about that when he gets into his liaisons, I'm not sure. And then we're in negotiations once again with all the union contracts. So that's kind of keeping us busy. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Question. The Horton property, again, there are no trespassing signs on it. Is there some reason why there's no trespassing signs on it?
Was, was that question to me?
Yes, yes, Andy.
I, I believe they were left over from when we were in the process of purchasing the property and there was some wood being taken. I think the owner went out and put them up then. I don't think they were ever removed. At least that might be my recollection. I'm not quite sure. We didn't put them up.
No, they were, they were, they were removed. And then there's fresh signs up. And I think I mentioned this last month and they're still there.
I'm unaware of that. I, I will note that and have the parks directs take a look at that. I don't believe that's anything that the town put up, but I'll look into that and come back with an answer.
Has there been any, any movement in making that, that land available to residents?
The land that we purchased for the municipal facility there? I think most of the, but.
It's more than just for the municipal. No, we just bought that land. We haven't decided whether we're going to put a municipal facility there, but go ahead.
To answer your question, the focus with the forces that we have have been concentrating on doing the trails. They haven't done anything over there to enhance the access.
And that's, that's been two years, right?
I think two years today, or a year ago today, the vote was. A year or two, I think a year or two today.
Okay.
Okay. A, all business?
Okay, that's the COVID-19, so. The library's open. The governor just released, released some restrictions today that are going to take effect, I believe, right around the 18th of March. And that's going to open up churches, gyms, restaurants and bars, and sports facilities and programs. So we're going to wait to get a, a formal list. He just did that this afternoon. I don't, I don't have that in front of me, but. So we'll, we'll revisit this and at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, we'll look to see, you know, what we're going to do. The plan right now, unless you guys tell me different, is we're, we're trying to get all the employees there. We're not trying to get them in where they have to sign it themselves now, but get shots. So once people get the vaccine, we'll feel more comfortable. We can probably open up the buildings. We're looking, if that is the case, maybe early, you know, in April. I think that's what we're, we're shooting for. So if we can do it sooner, we will. But we're not turning anybody away. We're making appointments. We have the drop boxes. We're dealing with people on the phones every day the staff is in. But that's the update.
Perfect. Thank you. I know Columbia is still closed, some of the other towns. So it'd be nice, well, we'll move forward as, as people get the vaccinations. Go from there. So hopefully it happens quick. Okay. Our next would be any other old business, which I don't know of any at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I, I was trying to find my mouse and I got so much paper on my desk. Can you go back? There was a hotline reference in the COVID document that Andy just referenced, and I had a question about that.
Okay, that was, the hotline has been established to provide information on testing and vaccination. Hebrew residents can call. The 228-5977. That's the number you're talking?
Now, so is that for anybody or is this specific to the seniors going to the seniors?
Sharon's on the line, but at the time we established that, that was to get the seniors vaccinated. So many things have changed since then. Sharon, are you still taking those calls?
Um, we're still fielding the calls. Right now, according to Russ Melmed, the Chatham Health District Director. They are not providing any clinics during the month of March for the general public. They stated that the State Department of Public Health had asked them for the month of March to concentrate on teachers and, you know, other educators. So at the moment, if someone calls the line, we're just telling them exactly what I told you and that we're hoping for future clinics to be held in Hebron. I think Russ and Vicky Han, the nurse at the Chatham Health District, have both stated that as the younger group is now coming on board, they're probably going to be using VAMS for registration versus our services because it will be a more computer savvy group as the age bracket goes down.
Well, let me put it this way. My wife's an IT consultant and VAMS is a challenge.
Yes.
She has a master's degree in IT and she's got, and she, and she is challenged by VAMS. It is not for the faint of heart.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to concur with, with Peter. Me and my wife were on that for an hour. Yep.
No, it's pretty sad. I, you hear that, you hear it on the news. This is not a friendly thing. I mean, these people, you know, you people need to get vaccinated. And instead of the state making it easy, it's, it sounds like it's become an utter nightmare.
It is a nightmare. It is a nightmare. My wife wakes up at midnight and then tries to get on and she, the next first appointment is May 26th. Then her friend said, I got one for March 9th and no rhyme, no reason. And they don't, it's just, it's not well designed at all. But again, it's a big, it's a big task. So I was hoping I could just call Sharon.
Well, again, we have to, we have to take our orders from the Chatham Health District in terms of how they want to do the scheduling, so.
I know, I understand. I just think if there was another resource, I seriously ask you if there was another resource and that might provide some comfort and direction because, you know, again, as John mentioned and I mentioned, it's, it's a full-time job to figure that system out. Or the savvy. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. It's good to hear.
We can take that, we can take that back to the Chatham Health District, right, Andy?
Yes, yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our next thing would be under new business, the NCAA Hebron Physical Fitness, Health, and Wellness Promotion Project Grant Application.
You want me to read that or you're, you're good?
I'll read the motion and then we can discuss it. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the grant application in the amount of $24,000 with $49,304 in-kind matching funds from the senior center budget for the fiscal year 2022 North Central Area Agency on Aging Incorporated. Hebron Physical Fitness, Health, and Wellness Promotion Grant Project. And that Town Manager Andrew J. Tierney be authorized to apply for, accept, and receive this grant and to sign any necessary documents. Sharon?
So, again, this is one of the three grants that I bring before you each year. So. Again, it's a request to support all of our physical fitness programs that we hold at the senior center. And any of the match is all in kind.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this? Questions? Hearing none. All in favor of this grant, the motion for this grant application? Saying aye? Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you. Moving on. Next one. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the grant application in the amount of $10,001 with $48,155 in-kind matching funds from the Hebron Center, Hebron Senior Center Budget for the fiscal year 2022 North Central Area Agency on Aging Incorporated. Hebron Outreach and Social Support Services Project Grant. And that the Town Manager Andrew J. Tierney be authorized to apply for, accept, and receive this grant and to sign any necessary documents. Sharon?
Okay, so again, one of the three grants that I submit annually. I think outreach is always very important, but especially too with this pandemic. The value of outreach, you know, is, has really, has been prominent.
Any questions? Any questions? Hearing none? Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you. Sailing right now. The next one. Move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve the grant application in the amount of $21,001. With fifty fifty six thousand seven hundred ninety two dollars in kind matching funds. From the Hebron Van Budget. For the fiscal year 2022 North Central Area Agency on Aging Incorporated. Hebron Expanded Transportation Project Grant. And that Andrew J Tierney. Town Manager be authorized to apply for, accept and receive this grant and to sign any necessary documents. Sharon, please.
Okay, so again, one of the annual grants for our dialerized service, which provides door to door. Elderly transportation services. I'll just mention that there also are monies that we apply for each year through the. State of Connecticut Elderly Demand Responsive Transportation. Grant, but that has not come before us yet. So we're waiting for the RFP on that, but. These monies would be in addition to the other monies that we will seek from the state of Connecticut.
Okay, any questions from anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Gail, please.
I know, and all of you know what in kind services mean, but we have public that do tune in and watch, and perhaps they're. This might be the time to have Sharon give a brief overview of what that phrase means.
Sure. Okay, so in kind services are services that we already are providing. So. For example, with our fitness programs, they're being held in our building. So it's a portion of our utilities, a portion of our time. A portion of equipment. So things that are already expenditures that we have. That we are attributing to. Helping to. Make the program feasible. So there isn't a cash match. All of the services are in kind.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? Hearing none. Gail.
Gail Richmond, I.
Peter.
Peter Casper, I.
Mark.
Mark Rivera, I.
Don.
Don Collins, I.
And myself, Dan Larson, I. Thank you. Our next thing would be the Guidelines for Selection of Chief Officers. And I believe I'll read the motion. Move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen amend the guidelines for selection of chief officers. To remove the fire chief appointment process from the document. And I believe we have Chief Wallach on.
We do. Um, if I could jump in, I'll turn it over to Nick, Mr. Chairman.
George.
Okay, um, so attached is a letter from Nick Walk regarding the guidelines for the selection of chief officers. Whether recommendation the guidelines be amended to remove the fire chief appointment from the policy. The policy's been kind of outdated since the last time, which was like seven, Nick can correct me, eight years when we put Nick in place. It was more of a non paid fire department. So there was a lot more of the rank and file that had. Input as the chief came up through the ranks. Now with the requirements and it being somewhat of a paid position, a lot of the applicants, most of them, almost all are from out of town. And in talking with the chief and the chief officers, we're recommending that this department head get hired like the the rest of the department heads. Through the process that we use, vetted on their experience and their ability to do the job. And with that, I'll open it up to Nick, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. As my letter states, the document is obsolete. It was brought to my attention that I actually knew that it existed. But years went by since we referred to it. And when I. Take put my eyes on it, it 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 just it's obsolete. So my letter speaks. For myself that I think we just should abandon. The document entirely. And let the town manager handle hiring process as normal as he explained through department heads.
Okay. Dan Larson, myself. I'm going to make comments and I've got nothing written down, so I apologize. Just as as. Background information, I was the last elected chief in the department that was elected by the corporation. I was the chief at the time that really changed and rocked the boat. To make it so that we would have. A a more potentially professional chief going forward. Only because in in some aspects, our pool to choose from was limited. And I could see that where. The fire service was headed. Was going to require paid personnel. To to do the job. It was it was not possible for a person to. Be a volunteer chief to put in the hours that was necessary. So I was the one that actually petitioned the town to go for a a paid chief. Type of of system. And I am all for this change. It's it's time has come. The the knowledge, the the ability to be there during daytime hours. Is is just too. Too much of 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 the necessity to be there during normal work hours. Average people just can't leave their jobs to do this function. And it's one of the largest budget items that the town has. And back in the day, to try to do that on a volunteer basis, I didn't think was proper. And the department backed beyond that. And that brings us to where we are today. So does anybody have any questions of Nick or? Okay, hearing none. Gail.
Gail Richmond, I.
Peter.
Peter Casper, I.
Mark.
Mark Rivera, I.
John.
Don Collins, I.
And myself, I. That brings us back to nine D. Which is the Affordable Housing Plan.
Yeah, we're on. We're on time, so we can go right to that. Let me pull that back out.
Okay, I don't see a motion in here.
There's not a motion. What it is, is this is more of an explanation. This is something per statute. Or mandate that the town needs to do. So I just want to make sure you guys are aware of this is in the budget. There's a letter. From. Behind it to the Board of Selectmen from Natalie Wood, the chairman of Hebrew Planning and Zoning. They're going to be undertaking a plan of conservation and development, and they're feeling is twofold. They're going to spend a lot of their time and expertise doing that as they have in the past. And that's a huge undertaking that saves the town a lot of money. A lot of towns use a consultant to do that where they do that in house. This is something more affordable housing plan. That's a mandate that we have to have this done. And they feel it'd be more objective if we hire a consultant that's not partial to do this work. So we placed a $20,000 marker or holder in the budget to do this, and I just wanted to make sure the Board of Selectmen was aware of this. So I'm not looking for approval tonight, but that's where we're heading. If it gets approved. Of course, in the budget, it still would need Board of Selectmen approval to move forward with hiring consultants. I just wanted to be upfront. Let this be known that that's what we're proposing to do. And it has a letter from the the chairman of the zoning board. Natalie Wood from. Planning its own.
Okay, and I actually read actually read the entire document. It took a little bit of time. You know, and and I I think a consultant is definitely the way to go. We've got the charrettes that plays into it. We've got our. Potentially senior or future senior. Housing build out that may play into this. So I think. This is reality that we need to do. Anybody have any questions on this?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Just a basic question, if I may direct it to Andy. So Mr. Mr. Tierney, the so what's the what's the order? It's like, so you. The consultant in terms of like the plan that the town would have to have some sort of commitment to take some action based on the outcome of this. Plan, and we would need to give direction. To the consultant as to how to structure the plan in accordance with some general guidelines of what we're trying to achieve here, because. You read through the whole thing, which I did as well. I wasn't planning on it, but I have I have an interest in it and. A little bit of background on one element of affordable housing, which I won't bore you with now, but. So what's sort of the order of things? And I saw the last plan and then. You know what? We must have some sort of action items that'll be the basis for the consultant is going to sort of. Try that because otherwise this thing could be, you know, it's a beautiful report, but what are you going to do with the information? So can you just sort of take me through how how the order is in terms of how we establish guidelines and direction for a consultant and that's what I'm just interested.
Absolutely. So there's consultants out there that do this for a living. What they would do is they would be hired by the town. You would vet vet them out who we want to hire. And then they would work. You guys would pick a certain entity within the town. That you feel would be appropriate to work with this consultant. It could even be the Board of Selectmen, could be the Town Managers Office, could be. What what it's ended up going to be is they're going to consult with probably every. Not every, but most of the boards and commissions to get certain parts of information, but. They will be a consultant to the town, and we would have an entity or form an entity to. Or a steering committee to work with that consultant to make sure as he moves forward. It's in with the best interest of what we're looking for for our town. At least that's. What I envisioned or what I've been told.
And the timeline, I mean, how did what would we expect? And and I don't remember every part of what I read, so that might be in there, but. Is it something that is by statute, one has to be completed by twenty twenty two?
I think there is an end date. There is an end date.
Somewhere in there, right?
Yeah.
And so then, so we're looking into higher. So the process is. A certain amount of months. It's being started now because the expectation by July of 2022, it has to be completed. And so is this? Is this a year process? Or is this a six month process that we just need six months to get organized and still meet the July twenty two deadline?
Well, we need to fund. We would need the funds approved in the budget, and those funds wouldn't be available till July first, but. If we saw if we saw in May that the referendum passes. And it did get approved, we could start the search for a consultant, and then it would be in front of the Board of Selectmen to to decide what entity or. What steering committee they would want to put together to work with this consultant moving forward with this project.
Okay, I just I just wanted to kind of get a nice little consent or consolidated perspective on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Other questions? Okay. And it does, as I say, there is, there's been a lot of work done, so hopefully. We'll get it done and. Move forward. Our next would be. The supplemental appropriation for the Fire Marshal, Fire Marshal Vehicle. Read the motion. Move the Hebrew Board of Selectmen approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $58,000. For the replacement of the Fire Marshal Vehicle. Andy.
So. This was in the budget for next year, which would, if got approved, would commence July one. There's an attached letter. We had the town mechanic look at it. Kevin Kelly wrote the letter on his behalf. Spelling out the issues. So this truck's been very good to us. We had very little problems till most recently. It's got 250,000 miles on it. We did a repair to it not that long ago to try to get it to make it to July one and wait for the replacement date. But since then. We took, we opted out to take the cheaper repair. And it's not going to make it. The oil pressure is down around twenty, and they're they're afraid it's going to go anytime, so. He uses that when needed for 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 inspections or fires when he has to come out. It's 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 an older vehicle with a lot of miles on it. I don't think we should be putting any more money into it, so we're recommending that we do a supplemental appropriation. And buy it in this fiscal year. Because I think it's just going to crap out and then it won't be worth anything.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, Peter.
I just, Andy, I was just thinking as you describing it, because I was at the Board of Finance meeting, and one of the natural questions was. You know, when you think of a Tahoe as a vehicle that size needed and and maybe if you didn't, I mean, I I just, what made me better understand the need for the vehicle was the size relative to the equipment. That was required and and all that. So I think there was some good dialogue around that that helped me, at least as I listened to the Board of Finance, better understand. The necessity of this type of vehicle. I think if I'm remembering the conversation correctly.
Yeah, he carries a lot of equipment with him, his turnout gear, the stuff he needs to conduct investigations. Along with radios, take up the center console. So you need a vehicle of this size to give him the tools he needs, because. It's a mobile unit where you have to go wherever the issue is, and he needs his equipment with him. There's computers in there, but there's a lot of stuff in the back and boxes. And toolboxes that he needs for a certain type of testing and and reports and things of that nature. So he's. I reiterated that question to him because it did come up at the Board of Finance, and he. He agreed that this is a sized vehicle he would would want to replace the old one with.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, Mark.
Andy, couldn't we do with a with an Explorer and get a little bit of gas mileage and save ten, twelve grand? There's not really much difference in size. It's not like he's carrying passengers in the backseat.
Yeah, he's he's not actually specifying the vehicles what he has now. So. I think you know as well as I do, the type of vehicle you look for, there's not a lot of them around there. You you dealt with it with the police vehicle. Because the the need and the urgency is he needs it now. We found and located one. So that's what this is. That's why we're doing it this way. It wasn't. That that we we don't have the time for a year or two to wait like we did with the police vehicle. It's we. Put a locator out. They'd have to bring this in from another state. It was about one of the only, but I'm not saying we couldn't do another search or something else, but this is pretty much requesting. To replace what he has, and a lot of the stuff he's going to retrofit out of that and put right into this, whether. That can be changed or not. I probably could be.
Okay. So what you're saying is that it has to be this vehicle, that there's no other vehicles around right now?
That's not what I said. What I said was is because of the urgency of needing to buy a vehicle right now, there's not one of these. On the lot, we did a search, so they located one in another. Another dealership or whatever, because if we could order what we wanted, we'd have to wait a long time. We're doing that. We waited over a year for a police cruiser, exactly what Mark's talking about. We don't have that time to or that affordability to wait because of the situation of the present vehicle, or we would. We always do that. I think this is the first time we think we're looking for. A supplemental appropriation because this thing's going to crap out. That's the urgency, but we didn't mean to specify this vehicle. It's one when we put the locator out that came up available.
Well, it seems to me you get a cheaper vehicle, right? Is that is that what? Right? Is that true?
I don't know who said that. I didn't.
Oh, so we is your is it your position? We can't get a a less expensive vehicle that's appropriate for his position at this point?
My position is we can't wait till the next fiscal year to put this in the budget due to the situation. Of the vehicle that we have that it uses every day, and it needs to be replaced. So therefore, we're not using the normal process is what I'm saying.
So could we get? Could we get an expedition in the next week or so? I mean. Is it? Is there an expedition in Connecticut that we could buy? That's cheaper than this?
I I don't have an answer to that question. Mark was talking about. I, I don't have an answer to that question. Mark was talking about an Explorer, I believe. Or I could look into see if there's one around, but I, I wouldn't know that answer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please. Yes, Nick.
Chief Wallach here. I was so interested in meeting, I thought I'd hang around. So regarding vehicles, what ends up happening is when you buy a Tahoe and you buy the consoles and the retro kits and everything that go with the Tahoe, you end up with a, and we went through this with the chief's vehicle, you end up with a certain set of equipment. So if you were going to, from a Tahoe back to a whatever else, the equipment, the consoles and so on and so forth will not fit the other vehicle. So there's a loss in value when it comes to changing styles of vehicles. And as it is, we may get another Tahoe and his equipment may not fit in. So those types of things occur. And regarding some of the equipment that he has, we've been kind of shoestring a little bit along with radios. So not that he needs new radios, but there's probably a couple of different upgrades that could be done to bring him in line with where we are with the department as far as radio performance and so on and so forth. And some of that's required by the state, but some of it's just like Talon County thing, which is, you know, how we get dispatched. So, and I'll take any other questions if anybody has any questions about it.
One of the things, Dan Larson, one of the things we also have to keep in mind is this is an emergency response vehicle. And the last thing you want to have is, you know, your, your fire services, fire marshal, whatever, responding to a, an incident and have the vehicle break down. You know, to have a vehicle that we already know has got some issues, it's just not wise. It would be nice if they could take the time to see if there are other vehicles that would fit the bill that the equipment could be put into for lesser amounts. But I, I personally have faith that our, our town staff and Randy, if he's involved in it, has always been very cognizant of trying to be as frugal as possible. And that's just my two cents on it.
I just, I just, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to be clear. Not trying to argue the point. If we were afforded the time, we always do exactly that. We look for any type of vehicle, the cheapest price. Because of the situation and the urgency, it took that ability away from us. So we went out and looked for like for like, and this is what came up. If, if that's not going to fit the bill and we're going to take a chance to try to run this one into the next fiscal year, we'll definitely do that other process to see what could come in cheaper. That's, I just want to make sure. I'm not, I'm not the one forcing this. It's the condition of the vehicle that we may not have if it breaks down tomorrow or before July 1. So because of the letter from the, you know, the repairs that we chose to do, because we didn't think it's a good idea to sink a lot of money into an older vehicle with that kind of mileage in it. We all have our own vehicles. So we're in front of the board today for a yea or a nay, if you want to move forward and purchase and replace it now. And if, if, if it doesn't happen, then we'll cross our fingers and we'll do our due diligence to try to do exactly what was brought up tonight.
Well, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, we want, we want the fire marshal to have a vehicle that's, that's useful and that doesn't break down. I would just say, generally, this doesn't sound like economizing to me. And, you know, the people of Hebron, my family, people I know, they economize and, you know, they just don't go out willy nilly and buy $58,000 vehicles. I don't, I've never done that in my life. And so when I see this, I, I have to question just the planning in this and, and whether this is cost effective. And so I'm concerned.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
This is, this is the type of thing when we have a, a replacement plan and you push them out, this is what forces us into this type of situation. This was pushed out a couple of years because it really hadn't given us a lot of problems, but all of a sudden now it is. So instead of spending more money to keep this on the road until we can do the due diligence, it's, it's a catch 22 and your vote will be the deciding vote. So I'm not trying to sway anybody either way. You got the letter from the town mechanic saying that it's not really, you know, pertinent to put money into this anymore. And if it blows up, it's not worth anything. If you have the ability to buy one now, we located a like for like, so we could swap out the stuff. That's what's in front of you tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mark.
If, if it helps and Andy, if it helps, the, the vendor we use for the police car got a bunch of new explorers in and a pursuit rated, which you were talking about Dan, so you can respond with lights and siren. I think we paid between 40 and 44 for it. That's the complete vehicle, pursuit rated. It's a, it's a Ford Explorer. It's, it's obviously a little smaller than a Tahoe, but we've had good luck with them and that's what a lot of police, all, almost all police departments are going to that vehicle. So I could see if he has one, Andy, and if he doesn't, he doesn't. So I can check if the, if the board wishes or if you wish, Andy.
It's, it's, like I said, I'm not pushing. It's the availability of the vehicles. We need, we need one like today. And if the board doesn't want to do that, I'm okay with that vote. We didn't mean to circumvent the process. What pushed us into this today is because Randy's truck could break down tomorrow. It has less than 20 pounds of oil pressure, which the letter states. And it's been very good to us. So we don't think it'll make it till July 1. But if you want us to try and see and then if it breaks down, he's without a vehicle. But you, Mark, you know the turnaround it took with us on the other vehicles, all I'm saying.
No, that, that's true, but, but things have lightened up a little bit and a bunch of vehicles have come in. So we, we ought to really act quick before there's a shortage again, just in case. I agree with you. If you, if we don't catch one quick, we could be like we were Chairman Larson with the police vehicle. It's been over a year since we ordered it. It's not coming till next month.
Just a general comment. Go ahead, go ahead. Yep.
Yes, girl.
Okay, thanks, John. I would like to just, I think we need to get something, we need to get something fast because you could end up without a vehicle in a very, very critical place, emergency services. What I would like, because Mark is talking about, there could possibly be something else that might fit the bill. I would like to modify the motion to where he says in the amount of put up to so that if something smaller can be, something else can be found that fits the bill, we've covered everything.
Okay. I will make a friendly amendment to that then. I believe I can do that. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount up to 58,000 for the replacement of a fire marshal vehicle. And with a comment that I would hope that the town would spend, you know, a little, just a little bit of time to ascertain if there is something else out there that would work, that would be available, and that would be more cost effective. Yes, Andy?
I just, I just want to make sure we're clear. The vehicle that we're looking at is 48,000 and he had another 10,000 to outfit it. Lettering, signs, lights. I, I want to be clear that the vehicle that was located is a $48,000 vehicle and he has $10,000 for, as Mark stated, and you did radio upgrades, upgraded some equipment, lettering, lights, sirens, that. I just want to make sure everybody knows what that money is for. It's not just for the purchase of the vehicle.
I got, got you, Andy, because I'm glad you clarified that because I know in Tahoes, I thought the Tahoe was 58 by itself without any, without any emergency lights, without any of the equipment that he would need. So I'm glad you said that.
Mr. Chairman, just to be, just to continue to beat this thing up a little bit, chief, if you, if I may direct the question to the chief.
Yes, please.
If you've got a smaller vehicle and then were to have to outfit it to meet the needs of the equipment, would that 10,000 turn into 12 or 13 because it's, has to be outfitted differently or instead of using existing radios? And because I don't know anything about it, we'd have to make some modification, buy some new equipment because what we have can't be transferred over. So are we going to be buying a smaller vehicle, saving eight grand and then spending five grand more to retrofit it effectively? Is that possible?
It's certainly possible. And the reason is when these vehicles, I'll, I'll use my chief's car as an example. When that car was ordered, it was ordered, not bought off the lot. And the reason for that, it's called the SSV, as in Victor, package, which is special service vehicle package. And that car is built on a Ford pickup truck chassis. So it's built in a heavier duty. It rides like a truck. But what ends up happening is when the vehicle comes in and goes to the radio shop, as an example, the seats come out of it, the headliner comes out of it, everything comes out of the, you know, it's a mess to run the wires for the radios and antennas and emergency lights and so on and so forth. When those are done, under the hood is done, then the interior is put back together. The radios that Randy has most likely could be reused, so there's some savings there. But the console that is put in between the seats and the light package that's used as ET 310 was refurbished with LEDs, Randy probably will go with LED package, not halogens or flashing lights. So that has a certain cost to it also. So you could say, well, we'll buy a smaller car or a smaller vehicle. And yes, instead of reusing some things, you're going to buy new consoles, new rear console, so on and so forth. And as the example that I always like to use is the, for the command post in back of the chief's car, you know, I pull up to a scene, I get out of the car, I go to the rear car, open the back hatch and there's a big box there with files and containers and radios, so we could run the scene from the back of my car. The box that we built, because I refused to pay $3,000 for a box, still costs us $600 to build with plywood. It, so, you know, the market that, that is an emergency services market, it's like any marine or airplane or boating. And that's the industry. It's, you know, a little more expensive. So it's not just a matter of buying a car on a lot and putting some lights and radios in it. It's, it's a pretty involved process. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, thank you, chief. I appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, you know, the, we're the Board of Selectmen. We're approving what, what, what is, you know, what comes to us. But the decision here is, is, that was brought to us is 58,000 because our thing, our, our car or truck is just as blown. And if we don't, if we don't do this, well, you know, what, what, what's going to happen? That's not management to my, in my, my sense of things. It's not good management. And so I, 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 I don't appreciate it. I guess I'll vote for it, but I don't appreciate it.
What would you rather have done better, different, John?
Well, maybe you should have planned, I don't know, you should have planned the, maybe the $250,000 mile truck was going to, was going to blow out. Maybe you should have got other, other, other types of vehicles and given us a, a range of, of costs. I mean, this can't be the only vehicle that, that, that could work in this situation. But I don't know because I'm not a paid manager. I'm a volunteer Board of Selectmen. People's taxes and, and prudent decision making. This is not prudent decision making. This is, you know, you don't vote for this, it's your fault.
Well, if I can, if I not be an argumentative, the management that was in this is having it in a replacement schedule, which got pushed out because CIPs keep getting cut. So now we're at a point by doing that, that brought us to this decision today. This was planned to get replaced two years ago before it got to this condition, quite honestly. And that's not being contradictory. That's just, that's a fact.
So it's, it's our fault, not your fault.
I'm not saying that. It was in the plan. It's been brought, brought before and it's been moved out.
Yeah, I don't appreciate that. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay. No further comments? All those in favor of this proposal, signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Witsman, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
You're welcome. Thank you for everything you do also.
I believe our next thing is the draft agenda for March 18th, 2021. I don't think there's anything we need to carry forward from tonight. So any other things that come up or whatever, please call in the, the suggestions. Anybody see anything on there that's glaringly wrong or what have you, or? Hearing none?
Well, NW, it's, it should be new business. You got the business, you got the ads on the business, but it should be our new business, not NW business.
Oh, the typo.
Oh, thank you.
And what's A? Should be an A, right? It should be AB. Is A missing under nine? Under, under Northwest Business?
Oh.
Is there an A? What's A?
No, it should be. NW.
Is it just, nobody, is it just two items or is there an item missing? It's my, it's serious. I was trying to make John laugh. Is there, I didn't know if there was an item missing.
No, there's a placeholder.
Just a placeholder for an A.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have to correct NW to NEW.
So noted. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Our next thing would be our consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine in nature, which the board may or may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. And basically we only have the approval of the minutes of February 18th, 2021, our regular meeting. And then the, looks like just one tax refund. So does anybody have any amendments to that or corrections? Actually, I need to make the motion first, so I apologize. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. And we have A, the approval of the minutes of February 18th, 2021, the regular meeting and then the tax refund. So hearing the motion, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Witsman, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Okay. Next would be our liaison reports. And top of the list is Mark.
I'll be brief so we can get to executive session. The, they're in budget talks right now. So at the RIM meetings, they're just basically talking about like we do the budget. like we do the budget and upcoming COVID, COVID changes. And I don't know if I had said this last time, but I think they picked an exact date for going back full time. And I believe it's March 29th.
Okay, thank you. Next now would be Gail.
Okay, um, I have nothing new on the Hebron Board of Ed, um, because they were at the same meeting we were at. For the Commission on Aging, that was, uh, meeting was Wednesday. They're continuing to take winter heating assistance applications. And they will be starting, starting very shortly with the renters rebate apps. The Douglas Library of Hebron is going to be starting a few new things. There's going to be a Zoom video game program for teens that will start on March 10th. There's going to be registration for Foundations of Equity Literacy, which is a workshop on conscious and unconscious social buyers. And that was scheduled for March 24th. And I would urge everyone to go out on the Douglas Library website, the newsletter has been redesigned and you can sign up there. That's it, Dan.
Okay, thank you. Next would be Peter.
Mr. Chairman, our Board of Finance meeting, obviously a lot of discussion on the budget. The audit is almost finalized. There was still discussion, a final review is pending for the Board of Ed's request for a non-lapsing fund request, which, as we talked about before, note of the Rams teachers contract being executed. That is a one-year contract, which is not normal. So you'll, we'll be seeing that again next year, but it looks like that, that went as well as could be expected. Discussions on the Bridge Grant Matching Fund. And a couple of things that really in effect were covered earlier in our meeting today. Parks and Rec, there was good discussion of President's all the town recreation leagues or leagues, you know, lacrosse, soccer, softball, baseball, et cetera, were in attendance. So Rich reviewed sort of how we, as a, as a town, run the fields and social distancing and rules and communication and things like that. They'll make a decision in June on the, final decision on Hebron Day. Farmers Market was discussed, it's still moving forward. I didn't realize, we now have five miles of sidewalks, so I thought that was interesting, that's a lot of miles, so. I just thought that was interesting, five miles of sidewalks, is that right, Andy? Five miles?
I'll take your word for it.
That's a lot. The Raymond Brook update and making good progress getting ready to review applicants for Rich's replacement. So on track to hiring by the end of June for next fiscal year. So there's been a lot of work there and questions in preparation for interviews and things like that. So that's, that's that. And then I had mentioned earlier, the, you know, it's, I'm not a liaison, but the Open for Business Task Force and the support of AHM's Health Matters Program. There is new video that's been posted and some things, some good work being done there highlighting our local restaurants. So, some of our local restaurants. And so if you have an opportunity to look at it on AHM's website, it's interesting information about, again, highlighting some of our local businesses. Thank you.
Quickly, what's, did, we used to have the Open for Business under Old Business, didn't we? Or am I mistaken?
No, no, we did, we did. And so that's why I try to squeeze it in from time to time where it doesn't belong. Yeah, it was there and then it's sort of, uh, it didn't quite continue, but that's okay, it's not, you know.
Well, no, I think it would be fair to have it back on there, myself, I don't know what the rest of the body thinks.
Peter requested that not be there, as, as I recall, right?
Oh, okay.
We added it on your liaison reports.
We did, okay. Yeah, so that's probably a good spot because it's slowing down a little bit. And we're targeting very specific initiatives and we're, we have some gap we don't meet as frequently as, as we're managing. And so I think under, if we could leave it on liaison, that would be, but great, but Dan, yes, you're right. Watching this, we, it was a weekly, every, we were meeting weekly, so every other week I was providing an update on Old Business, so. Thank you, but where it is, is fine, if I can update as needed on the liaison, that would be terrific.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds fine.
Thank you.
And then, well, John?
So just quickly, land acquisition, MetLife's special meeting, talk about the, the, you got 200,000 from the state to buy property on an airline trail, it was 258, which is fantastic. And to consider an additional acquisition or new acquisitions, but we came to no, no decisions. But that's pretty much it.
Okay. Andy, was there not something that you were acting as liaison for, and I can't remember what it was?
Two things, we closed out the RAM projects and the other one's a WPCA, but I don't have any update for today's meeting regarding that.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I have nothing for tonight because our meeting was, Tuesday was the same night that the fire department met. And I would, I can't split myself to two meetings at the same time, I haven't figured out how. So. Okay, with that, again, we'll open it up for public comment if there is any.
There's nothing, no public comment at this time.
Okay, great. Then at 8:17, I would suggest that we go into our executive session. And that's with the Town Manager Annual Evaluation. And Gail, who do we need to invite in?
We would invite in Donna at this time, so she can do all that work for us. And then have Andy be on standby.
Okay.
We'll just cell phone him, a text when, when we want him in.
Okay, great. So we'll wait for Donna to say that we are set with the executive session requirements.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, at 8:58. And I texted Andy, so.
Right, let's just make the motion and do it.
Yep, well, we're just trying to make sure everybody's, is literally on Zoom.
You had the motion coming in all, all set, didn't you, Dan?
We, the Board of Selectmen are voting to do a 3.5% raise with a $4,000 bonus for the next fiscal year for Andrew Tierney, our Town Manager, which would be effective as of July 1st, 2021. Hearing that motion? Any further discussion? Hearing none? Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
John?
John Collins, no.
And myself, Daniel Larson, aye. Motion carries, four to one. At this time, I'm not sure, there's no other further business? Yes, yes, Peter.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I did, we, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting, I just, I know, do we typically ask for public comment, isn't there one?
I was going to say, we.
I got a text back from Andy. Donna, he says you won't let him back in. He says he either went to the website and tried to get in.
He's here.
He just got on.
Yeah, he just got here.
He just got here while I was reading his text, okay.
Yeah, it took, it took a couple of tries, I went to the website and then went back to go to meeting and finally let me back in.
Okay. We made, we made a motion to do a 3.5% raise and a $4,000 bonus effective as of July 1st, 2021. You know, the new bit, the, the, the new fiscal year, and the motion carries four to one.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, can I make a motion?
I guess so, yes.
I move that the Board of Selectmen direct the Town Attorney to consult with Mr. Collins, me, to appropriately voices dissension to the previous motion.
I, I, I bring a question to vote, Dan.
Okay.
John's motion.
Yes, we have to, we have to vote on allowing that the agenda.
Okay, so.
What, what'd you say? It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, we have to, if we're going to make an addition to the agenda, we have to vote on. Go on the agenda, then you make your motion.
Point of order, um, you can make a motion on a topic that is on the agenda, this certainly is on agenda, we discussed it in our, in our meeting. You can't, I mean, a, a selectman can make a motion based on what was discussed on the agenda. There's, there's no, there's no, in, in the Charter and in Robert's Rules of Order, that's how it's done.
But you're, you're bringing the question to ask if we're going to expend public funds to pay for an attorney to give you advice.
Okay, let's, okay, let's let Andy speak for a second, please.
About what was on the agenda, the, the, the off, the Town Manager Evaluation.
Okay, so, so we should bring that to a vote if we're going to do that. I, I think, I, I think there is a nexus between that, John, so we should vote on it.
Mr. Tierney's been trying to say something, he keeps raising his hand.
Yes, just, just point of order, you can't make any motions in executive session, can't do any business in the section, you can discuss. Come out and add it. You're out? Oh, I, I apologize, I didn't know that.
Yes.
And just point of order, a non-member cannot make a point of order, just, just so you know.
Mr. Chairman, I need to clarify a few things if I can have the floor.
Yes, please.
I thought I was going to get invited into an executive session, that's what I was told when I went out to discuss my evaluation. So now that you're back in the general public, apparently I have no say regarding my evaluation. And per Charter, if we're going to go down this road, the Town Manager has the right to speak at any and all board and commission members. He just does not have the right to vote. It's in the Charter.
You can't make a point of order, that's.
I can call the selectman, the chairman of the board, point of order.
Oh, my God, okay. The, the question is from John, is, from what I can gather, is he wants permission for us to bring to a vote, from what I'm gathering, just trying to get a clarification here. He wants to talk to the Town Attorney to verify, and I'm going to let you explain it, John, because you're the only one that can explain what you want to talk to the Town Attorney about. And then my question is, is that town business or is that personal business? I don't know. Explain why your, your reasoning, and then we then would have to decide whether or not we want to bring that to the floor for a vote. I, I, am I wrong? And I'll ask someone to help clarify it.
No, you're right, I'm, I'm asking to talk briefly with the Town Attorney to make sure that my opposition to this is, is appropriate and the town is not liable. I'm just speaking as a selectman. Now, if you don't want to do that, that's fine too, I, I, you know, to me, it's a responsible thing to do. But I, I oppose this, you know, I'm, I'm the only one that opposes it, I oppose it for good reason, I think. So I, I'm looking for direction. So, but if, like I said, if you don't want to give me, you don't want me to be able to discuss this with the Town Attorney, well, I don't know.
So may, maybe, could we modify that again for future reference? Because we're asking the Town Attorney, can we, as a Board of Selectman member who might disagree vehemently with a motion? Now, the motion's passed, so you, you don't like the outcome, okay. But you're saying, hey, I want to take it further and I need some advice as to how I can continue to express my opinion on this. It may not be this issue, it could be plenty other issues in, in the future, is, do we have the right to go to the Town Attorney to ask for that advice? Go with the attorney, so maybe it's more of a general question? Because we had John's particular issue, could be Mark has an issue next week or two weeks from now, or I have something I want to, you know, we, we don't want to line the Town Attorney costing the taxpayers money without understanding when we disagree with something. Do we have the right to use town funds even if it's for 15 minutes to, I, I don't know, so I'm just throwing that out. Is, is it more of a general question first? Attorney says, yes, you can do that, that's appropriate for town funds to get clarification for a Board of Selectman member when they disagree with a motion. So could we do it more generally? It's just an idea of sort of a compromise here, rather than specific to John and specific to his disagreement with this particular motion.
Is it a disagreement with the motion or is it a disagreement with the outcome? You know, or how would a person properly voice their turner opposition without jeopardizing a legality? Is that, is there right?
Right, I, I, I think, Peter, I don't have a right to consult with them without the board's approval. And I don't think anybody does, but I, I think it's in the town's interest for me to consult with them so that whatever I say is fair to, to Mr. Tierney.
So regardless then, John, what you're saying is that you are going to be vocal outside of this board and a board meeting with your opposition. And you want to make sure you don't put the town in a legal position and you're not.
Right.
Okay.
Because I think it has to do with the future of the town, and I think that's, that's my job. So people should know why I voted against it, and I'm, I'm going to say why.
Again, that's a personnel matter, and that shouldn't be for public consumption. You can go put your legal opinion if you want, but everybody has rights. And you have to be very careful when you're playing about people's lives and talking about your evaluations of them. Because you're going to get into the area of, is it truthful? And you're going to, we're going to open ourselves up for liability. And to, to pay for somebody that wants to make an opinion on taxpayer money, I, I can't support that.
Yeah, when, when you're, on the personnel issue, when you're disagreeing as John is, the thing is, he could hurt Andy's ability to earn a living, and that's illegal.
It is. I've been to the Labor Board, hey, I've been to the Labor Board many times when Hartford made mistakes. And you learn what you can do and you can't do. And you only get to see your personnel file yourselves in the, in the room with somebody present. And that's you, you think you'd have your own right to see your personnel file? You can't see it in your first year of employment. And then you have to go and make an appointment to go to personnel to see your file in front of somebody. You can't take it out of there, and that's just you. So to present that to the public, that, that's, that's a far reach.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman, so John, are you saying that you're, you want to meet with the Town Attorney to make sure you're doing it within the context of what would be, would not put the town in jeopardy? So if you go out without the Town Attorney, you're going to go out with it without the Town Attorney's opinion? Like if we say, no, you can't go through the Town Attorney, you're still apt to continue the discourse on it, which could put the town in jeopardy. So you're saying you want to go to the Town Attorney to make sure you're not putting the town in jeopardy by how you want to express your opinion?
You plan on going to the, writing a letter to the River East, I gather?
Possibly, but, you know, legislatures and politicians criticize, you know, employees, you know, the Secretary of State, you know, the President. I mean, the Senator can criticize them without liability.
They're elected officials, John, you, you can't, you, John, if you want to do that, boy, it goes at your own risk. I'm not getting on board with that.
Okay, I, I, I've given, I, I think I have every right to do it, and I'm, I'm going to do it. I'm asking. I'm asking, you know, for 15 minutes of, of the talk with the attorney, I think it's appropriate. You don't, that's fine. I, I, like I said.
I'm having a hard time figuring out why the taxpayer dollars should be used, but, um.
All right.
Well, I would tell you, I mean, my opinion, Gail, is that it, without taxpayer dollars, we could put the town at risk.
Yeah, that's.
Because. Make some statements that, you know, whatever he does, I mean, depending on what he says, I don't know. And, and if there's any suggestion that the town is at risk, then we should have at least understood what the risk would be as opposed to just him going out expressing his opinion and us doing damage control. At least the attorney can say, now, John, would you, then we would get to hear that opinion from the attorney before you went forward in the public?
Yeah, absolutely. No, I mean, this is, this is for the benefit of the town. I, I'm a selectman. I know things that the townspeople don't know. And, you know, this is my, my, my feeling. I, I, again, I, I, I'm pretty sure I have, you know, a right to say whatever I want to say as long as it's, you know, it doesn't come from the person, you know, the, the employee's file, which I don't have any knowledge about anyways. This has to do with the town and the future of the town. And, you know, I, I would just, I mean, for the town's benefit, a little bit of it, you know, a little bit of sage advice would be for me, you know, I'm, I'm a selectman. The town attorneys should be available to selectmen into the town of four important matters. I think this is an important matter, but, you know, if you guys don't, that's, that's okay too.
Are you writing your letter, John, as a selectman or as an individual?
Well, it's going to be obvious that I'm a selectman, so.
Well, yes, we always sign our letters that way, but. It's going to be, you're going to be speaking for yourself only. Okay?
If he's speaking for himself, he's speaking for himself. Is he, if he is speaking as a selectman, then it would definitely need, I would think, to have a legal opinion on it. I would think the, the attorney would want to see what is actually going to be going to the press before he could make any kind of a judgment as to whether or not is proper or not. The, the thing is that, that whatever John writes is going to be from his personal viewpoint. It would not be from the, the board of select people. You know, and the vote would show that, you know, four to one. So I, I think it would be a hard stretch for anybody to say, oh, that's what the board of selectmen are thinking. Because it was a individual, uh, but again, legally, he would have to sign it, you know, speaking as an individual, the whole, the whole legality that we do whenever we write any kind of a, a response in the paper.
Hey, a, a caveat here. If, if this, so there's so many things that, that there's not clear case law. And so if you, if you want to establish a situation where they're going to decide if he's speaking for himself or is the board and the town liable for what he's saying? If there's no case law that expresses that already, I, I, I don't want to be the town that decides, because he may say he's speaking for himself, but it goes to court and they say, no, he's speaking for the town because of his appointment and his election. So I don't know if I, I don't want to try that.
Oh, we need an attorney's opinion, which is what he's asking for.
And that would be his opinion unless he has case law that supports that, because we've got an attorney's opinion. This happens all the time in the police world where you, 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 you think you know what you're doing and then you get sued. And then you find out when you go to court that the court decides something that you had thought was okay, that your attorney said. And, and that establishes case law. It's called stare decisis. I have no interest in being the test case to see if you're speaking for yourself or you're speaking for everybody. And unless that's determined somebody by law, I, I, I don't want, I don't want our town to be, to be that. And may, maybe, you know, maybe we do need to, to get an opinion to protect ourselves if John is insistent upon speaking. Because if he does speak, it may not be right for him because he's speaking for us, even if he says he isn't. This is more, this is way more complicated. This is way more complicated than you guys think it is.
I think it's complicated. Got to protect each of us also.
Yes.
Right, right. Okay.
Peter? So Mr. Motion, we, Mr. Chairman, we called the question, right? So you're asking for, I don't have any additional to say.
Okay, let's call the question.
Call the question, please.
Okay. So the motion is do we allow John, you know, 15 minutes or so to get a clarification from the attorney as for how he wants to respond to? And help me out, John, the vote or what?
Yeah, the vote, that's fine. I mean, the vote.
The vote. If it.
Dan?
Yes.
And we already, he, we, each of us already voted, but John wants 15 minutes with the attorney for advice on how to voice his opposition. Is that it?
Appropriately, right, appropriately.
How to voice its opposition appropriately. Yeah.
Okay, okay. And that's, but that's why I'm just trying to get this clarification. So thank you. So with that being the discussion item, those in favor signify by saying aye. Gail?
And just before we close discussion, I want to, because we haven't really closed discussion, I want to make one more point. I, I, I don't, I'm not in favor of spending tax money to do this, but I am in favor of protecting ourselves. So I think reluctantly, we need to let that happen. Before we go to vote, I'm just throwing that out there that it's too big a risk to take to save $250 of legal time.
Okay, so this is to move the question? And Gail said what?
Oh, I was getting, I thought we were voting. I was getting, I was all set to vote. But all right, so how did we reword the question? You want me to remember that, huh?
Yes, because it was perfect.
No, I don't need, Dan, you don't need to re, I, I was just, I wanted everybody be aware that what's at stake here. And $250 is, is, is not a, a, a huge expenditure to give John his advice to protect us.
Okay, and.
You changed my opinion because I don't want to be exposed. I don't want the town to be exposed. I don't want to be exposed. I don't want you to be exposed.
Okay, we moved the question. So, uh, Gail is.
Gail Richmond, aye.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Kasper, aye.
John?
John Collins abstained.
Okay, Mark?
I, I'm going to say aye to, to him consulting.
I will say aye. So this moves to that we would then, uh, when we've already had a plenty of discussion. So now we're going to go to the vote on the question of allowing John to go to the attorney.
Oh, I thought John, my attorney.
What's that?
What, what was the last, I thought the last vote was.
That's the.
Question. We have to vote to bring it to discussion and move the question. So now we're voting on the question.
I'm sorry, I was confused. I, I thought I was voting on the motion. I apologize.
I, I know, but it's, it's the same. It's going to work out to the same thing.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. I thought I was voting on the motion. So, let's go again.
So, uh, so, uh, Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Kasper, aye.
John?
John Collins abstained.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye, but I think you need to include that the question has to be in writing.
Oh, John's question to the attorney.
John's question should be in writing.
I would think that the attorney is going to want that in writing. That is going to be between he and the attorney. And I would, I would think the attorney would want to have it in writing before he's going to make any kind of a determination. I, I.
We asked for that as we're the ones footing the bill. The town is footing the bill, so shouldn't.
We should specify that.
We want the attorney's opinion in writing, right?
Yes.
John's question in writing and the opinion in writing.
Yeah.
Formulate the motion.
Well, I, I, I'm asking for advice. I, I don't know. So I, I really, I need to confer with him first. And then, you know, then we can review the letter if he wants, if that's, if that's what's necessary. I don't.
Yeah, just start the process in writing and then if it, if, if, if it evolves into that they need to have a verbal discussion, fine. But it should first, a, 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 all things of that nature should, should be initiated by something in writing.
I would say that, and I agree with you, but I would think this would be something that the attorney would request or require. So I'm going to leave it up to his discretion as to how he would want to proceed and respond. Because that's going to be his, you know, his, uh, world. But I would agree with you. It, I would, I would think if I were the attorney, I would want everything in writing for his own protection.
Right.
So, uh, we have so far three for yes, one abstention, and I will vote yes. So before, for yes, one abstention.
Great.
Wow. Okay.
All right. Is it time to make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, we have any public comment?
And we have Andy wanting to make a comment.
Yes, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I know we're into the COVID and things are a little different than we normally do with the process, but I just want to be clear now that we're out of executive session. I wasn't invited in. So my evaluation was done without any input from me or any discussion executive session. And I just want that on record.
Duly noted.
Yeah, we read your, I read your goals and that you had met them, so, um, we got that far.
Any public comment? Donna?
There are no public comments.
Thank you. With that, I believe that we are up for adjournment.
It's nine 24. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Night, everyone.